This is the regular session of the Mayor of Council of the City of Bisbee County of Cochise and State of Arizona to be held on Tuesday, October fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, at seven P. M. at the City Hall Building, nine fifteen South Torquemore Road, Bisbee, Arizona. Ms. Cornetta, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Louis Pollak is excused. Councilmember Joni Giacchino is excused. Councilmember Bill Higgins?
Here.
Mayor David M. Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns?
Here.
Councilmember Joan Hanson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Anna Klein?
Here.
City staff Teresa Coleman, City Manager, Ashley Coronado, City Clerk, Carrie Bagley, Finance Director, Jesus Haro, Public Works Director, Alberti Chabe, Police Chief, George Castillo, Fire Chief, James Ledbetter, City Attorney, is attending via phone.
Thank you. And welcome, Mr. Ledbetter.
Thank you.
For our moment of silence, I'd like us to remember Lou Pollak's mother. She's in hospital in Florida, apparently in critical condition, and that's why he's not with us, is he's flown back to be with her. So if we could take just a moment and keep her and that family in our thoughts. Thank you. Would you please stand and join me on the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under one law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. We'll get to it here. I will give a quick rundown, maybe, of things that we've, I've done in the last couple weeks. There's a couple of things in there that I think should be of interest to people. On the second of October, I attended a Design Review Board meeting. And on the third, I met with a member of the Airport Advisory Committee who had just had left for a couple of years and had returned and was asking to get caught up on items. And then subsequently, attended that meeting with Ms. Johns as the liaison. The third was our first, the third of October was our first Charter Review Commission meeting. And it went very well, and Mr. Boyd Nickel is the Chair of that commission. And Danielle Bouchere is the Secretary. And we're looking for good things from them. On the fourth, I met with the Mariachi Festival Committee regarding advertising that they want to do and discussing permitting and so forth, and this coming up. In reference to the Mariachi Festival, we also discussed, which I then followed up with, inviting the Mayors of Naco and Cananea and Ava Priera to have them here. On the fourth, we had a meeting that evening on affordable housing, and that was with Habitat for Humanity out of Tucson, the Cochise County Health Department, and Ms. Johns was there also, wearing her Health Department hat, well, both hats. And there were a number of citizens there also, and that will be on our, further information will be tonight on our agenda. On the tenth, I met with Coalition for the Homeless regarding the Gilchrist Apartments and questions they had, in reference to Gilchrist. And on the tenth, we had the Mayor Managers Meeting in Whatchukah City, and hosted by Mayor Wallace. And of course, our City Manager was there, and Mr. Pollak was there also. On the eleventh, which was Friday, I met with Naco, Cananea, Hermosillo, and Douglas, the Mayors and Representatives, to plan an event. And that's why I'll take just a couple of minutes to discuss it, so that I can give everybody a heads up on that event. They're hoping, we are hoping, for an event on November sixteenth. And this will be in Naco, Arizona, in Naco Sonora. The plan is to close the street in front of Gay Nineties, and the Mayor, Mayor Ramos on the other side, will close the street on the other side, and that we will have a concert back and forth across the border. And we will be using our large screen that we use for our movies in the park on our side. They will be having something, hopefully similar, on their side. And we are having some of our local musicians rounded up to play. They're doing the same thing on their side, and it's going to be, the entertainment on this side will be projected to that side and vice versa. And that will be on the sixteenth, it's going to start at four o'clock in the afternoon. Everybody's welcome. Not only welcome, but I hope we have a big crowd. And we're going to have a couple of food trucks there to take care of that part of the festivities. That same day, at one o'clock in the afternoon, the Mayor Ramos and her contingent are coming across, and we're going to meet for lunch at Camp Naco. And it's going to be kind of a potluck, we're coming, sort of, we're coming up with a menu, but Mayor Ramos indicates that her mother is an excellent cook and is going to be making some, some great food, and then we're going to be adding to that, so it ought to be a lot of fun. So it's, again, trying to get our cross-border activities, the culture, the common culture, and the Congress. And Hermosillo, the Sonoran Department of Commerce is heavily involved in this, as is Governor Pavlovich will be invited, and of course, Governor Ducey will be invited. So it will be, hopefully, a lot of fun and the first of many, so. Anyway, that's what I met on the sixteenth, and since then, we've been inundated with more emails from Mayor Ramos, and I asked you to be our point of contact here, and she's probably sorry she said yes.
To continue them.
This last Saturday, I met with Shay Stotts, and Shay is a candidate for the House of Representatives. He's a Republican candidate for the House of Representatives to be running eventually against, we assume it would be Ann Kirkpatrick. And Shay, I gave him the courtesy, as I do all of the political people that are running when they come here and actually ask to meet with me, I meet with them no matter what party they're with, to talk to them. Typically, as in his case, he just wants to get caught up on Bisbee. What are the, you know, what are your major problems? What are your concerns? What federally do you need out of the government? This kind of thing. So I met with him. And then yesterday, I met with a past member of the Board, a past Board Member of the Royale, to discuss some ideas that some people have about developing the Royale into an art and culture district centerpiece. So that's what I've done the last two weeks, and with that, we will move on to real work. We have call to the public now. Helen Lampenin?
Hello.
Are you a call to the public, or do you have a specific item you want to discuss?
Specific item?
Okay, which item is it?
It's the Halloween party from the hotel on the twenty-sixth. She might, she might have signed the wrong form.
No, sir, she, she, it's just that she didn't put down what she wanted to discuss.
Oh, I apologize.
That's quite all right. Okay, so that's item number E?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, does she want to speak on that, or is she available if we have questions?
We came, we already discussed it with your panel last week.
Yes.
And we just came and thought if any specific questions we could answer.
Excellent, excellent. Why don't we leave it at that?
Yes.
If we have questions, otherwise, you needn't.
And I'm glad I have all the answers.
You have the answer? That's excellent. All right, then, we have no call to the public per se, and with that, we will, I will go on to accounts payable, subject to availability of votes.
I move that we pay accounts payable in the amount of two hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and forty cents. Second?
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any questions?
I've got one.
All right.
On page two. It's for sewer and garbage for public works, and it's four hundred and one ninety-seven. Is it usually that high, or is there a reason why it's so high for sewer and garbage?
Mr. Haro, do you have an answer? It doesn't look like you have an answer.
Okay.
We'll let the Finance Director give an answer.
Yeah, it's the same amount every month, it's just all the departments that are charged as sewer and garbage fees, it's set up by department, so that's a, I think we based it off what we pay to City Hall, you know, for a rate for here.
So they're all combined, rather than, okay. That's what I was wondering, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson. Anything else? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor of paying accounts payable, signify by stating a aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carried. The consent agenda, this is items A through G. Items A: Approval of the minutes of the regular session of Mayor of Council, held on October first, two thousand nineteen, at seven P. M. B: Approval of the resignation of Michael McPartlin from the Design Review Board. C: Approval of the appointment of Scout Day to the U Council. D: Approval of a park facility and right-of-way use permit for the use of Howell Avenue in front of the Copper Queen Hotel for a Halloween Street Dance on Friday, October twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, from five P. M. to three A. M. This includes setup and tear-down, or breakdown. E: Approval of an application for an extension of premises slash patio permit submitted by the Copper Queen Hotel for an event to be held at eleven Howell Avenue in Bisbee, Arizona, on Friday, October twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, through October twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen, Helen Lampenin applicant. F: Approval of a special event liquor license application submitted by Joseph Lewis for an event to be held at the Bisbee Social Club, located at sixty-seven Main Street, Bisbee, Arizona, on Friday, November first, two thousand nineteen, from eight P. M. to two A. M., with Joseph Lewis applicant. G: Approval of a special event liquor license application submitted by the American Legion Post Number Three for an event to be held at the John Bull Motel, located at three seventeen Tombstone Canyon, Bisbee, Arizona, on Friday, November eighth, Saturday, November ninth, and Sunday, November tenth, from eight P. M. to eleven P. M. Betty Luther, applicant. I am going to pull for further discussion, item F. Does anybody else want any items pulled for discussion?
I'd like item D.
It's a D as in David.
Correct. I just got a question.
Anything else?
I have item F as well.
Item F? Well, okay, well, that's one I.
Did we all want to pull?
I think that's one I just pulled, right?
Right, so we didn't need to say it.
It only takes one of us.
Right.
All right, so it's item F and D. Is that it? Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda items A, B, C, E, and G.
Thank you.
My second.
Ms. Cornetta?
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item number D, this is the Copper Queen Hotel Halloween, what is your question?
My question is the music and how loud that's going to be until two in the morning. I'm just a little concerned. I don't know what the, the number of residents that are around that, but I know that if it gets too loud, then it does impact.
Well, I'll answer your questions. First of all, the date's wrong, it's for Saturday, and it starts at seven, we close the street at seven thirty, eight o'clock, and it starts at eight thirty.
Okay.
The original plan was like to last gay pride, when it poured horribly the year before last. So all we did was we tried to leave a backup day, so we don't lose everything when we try to do this, in case it rained. But it's sunny all day Saturday, I know that for a fact. But the whole plan was always for Saturday. There's another day that's going on before, we're waiting, there's another event right around the corner, we're waiting for that event to end completely. And once they're done, that's when we'll close out the street. I've already got the signs, rented urinals, taking care of everything. And your question exactly was the music?
The music.
Well, typically, we play as loud as we always have. I don't think we've ever had a complaint as the music, ever. Like, if, you know, someone complains, we'll gladly turn it down at past twelve o'clock. I mean, we're here once with everybody.
Yeah, I think in the past, it's been till twelve, and this is, you know, till two, so that was the reason I was asking.
Well, I've been in over the place for three years now, and it's never been twelve o'clock. I'm just saying, but I got no problem with that, it's always been beyond that.
Has it?
Yes.
Well, maybe it's just because I live there.
The bar, the bar's open.
Yeah, well, actually, actually, the music shuts off at one thirty, the permit just ends till two o'clock, because we have to get everyone out of there and make sure everyone's okay. And we also, we also hired two, two marshals from the Ranger Service, they come out every year to help us with the event.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve consent agenda item D.
My second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Cornetta?
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item number F: Approval of a special event liquor license application submitted by Joseph Lewis for an event to be held at the Bisbee Social Club, located at sixty-seven Main Street, Bisbee, Arizona, on Friday, November first, two thousand nineteen, from eight P. M. to two A. M., Joseph Lewis applicant. You'll remember that the last time we tabled this, I spoke with Mr. Lewis. As a result of that, I informed him that the business license he had did not cover this premise for that purpose. He then has come to the city, there's a new business license on file, it is the correct classification. Subsequently, he has called the Bisbee Fire Department for an inspection. They inspected it, there were a couple minor discrepancies. He called again for a re-inspection. They were to come this morning to inspect it, the inspector called in sick. Joseph Lewis called me and said, what do we do? Is there any way that we can approve this contingent on the inspector who's coming tomorrow morning approving it? I said that I thought that was reasonable, but that I'd bring it up to the council. So what he's asking for, what I, I am, actually, I will move it, so we can discuss it, that we approve, I am the without contingent on the fire department passing the inspection. Is there a second? Okay, it dies for last, not for the second, but what is your discussion?
Well, my, my question was just that this special event liquor license application looks so different from the one that John Bull turned in, because they had like an actual liquor license attached to it, and he didn't have one. So I wanted to ask Mr. Ledbetter why the John Bull's looks so legitimate and his looks so not. And it was just the application, and, okay. So it's.
With the John, well, they provided the liquor license.
Okay, okay.
And they just don't have one issued yet, so they'd be going off of a special event license that would be issued after the fact.
Okay, okay, that was just because I'm new and.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, and so that was just my only question.
So once it's passed with us, they will mail it to the state, and they'll be issued a special event license that will look similar to it, and just be issued for those dates.
Okay, okay, that was my only question.
Yeah, that's.
Okay.
Ms. Klein?
The question I had was the business license, why that was in the first step with events or that? And then, what are the dance performances? Did we ever decide that it was the fire dancing?
There's no fire dan, there's no fire dancing, and the chief was erroneous, as you recall, when he said, I remember it was one somebody, but it wasn't that. There's never been a plan for that. And he specifically told me this morning again, that, he says, if it comes up, there's not going to be any with fire. He indicated that he doesn't even have open candles down there, that they have nothing but LED candle lights on the tables, so there's no flame down there.
Okay, so then I guess my, my final question is, is this just somebody that's having an event with alcohol, or is it for a specific group, or?
Well, the, the, the packing indicates that there's twenty-five percent that's going to a charity in Phoenix. As required by the, these special liquor licenses, twenty-five percent has to go to a charity.
But it's not for a specific group here.
It's going towards the Boys and Girls Club, that's what we're donating that to.
Oh.
So, yes, we got the liquor license for a woman in Phoenix, but yet, we're donating to the Boys and Girls Club.
Thank you, Ms. Klein. Okay, so, Boys and Girls Club, good? Anything else?
I'll second.
Yeah, I was just gonna.
Well, okay.
Or do we need to make another motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion, again, that we approve this contingent on the fire department, giving them a clean bill of health.
Okay, second.
Okay. Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. If technically, once the motion was made, did I second the word, to talk about it, but we're good. Our attorney didn't jump on me, so we're okay. He'll get me later. Okay, well, let's go to do the business. Discussion on possible approval of a park facility and right-of-way use permit for the Bisbee Coalition for the Homeless for the Fifth Annual Bisbee Mariachi Festival two thousand nineteen, for signs, trash barrels, dumpsters, additional dumpster pickup and parking spaces on Friday, November first, two thousand nineteen, from five P. M. to seven P. M., and Sunday, November second, two thousand nineteen, from eleven A. M. to seven P. M., with a request of waiver of fees. And this is here, instead of on the consent agenda, because of their request for a waiver of fees. So we'll open the discussion. Anybody, I've discussed this with them, of course, and it's a, one hundred percent of the money goes to the Bisbee Coalition for the Homeless, unlike many of these other things. And they do bring a several thousand people to Bisbee, and that's their sales pitch, which is somewhat valid. So I'm bringing, I'm bringing that forward for the council's discussion and decision. Mr. Higgins, what do you think?
It's a, one of the city's, you know, bigger events, it's, everybody comes, has a good time. I'm okay with waiving the fees, since, you know, they will be bringing people to town.
Do we have the, I don't have it, but the fee amount's there, right?
It's one thousand six.
That's with the bus.
That's with the bus, yeah.
Yeah.
It's six hundred and sixty-one dollars less without the bus.
Correct, and, and we're, they want a bus, but they fully understand that we're not going to buy them a bus. They, they understand that they're going to have to look elsewhere, that was part of my discussion with them, that I, I mentioned earlier. And so they are okay with that, I mean, they'd love us to donate a bus to them, but they understand that that's not going to happen, that we have to pay a bus driver at Douglas, and so forth. So what are the fees without the bus, then, three?
Four hundred and fifty.
Okay. So that's what they're asking for, for that, or part of it, or all of it, or none of it, that's up to you. Ms. Klein?
Well, you know, I, I like the idea of waiving the fees, but then again, you know, we may have another group coming before, you know, then we get back into the, you know, let's just waive the fees for everybody. I would be good with, if we have the fees.
Okay, yeah, some of these groups that come to us, if I, this is my opinion, only my opinion, some of these groups that come to us, a small percentage of what they make comes back to the community. In this case, all of it comes back, and that's why I, I, that's the only reason that I would even entertain a grant or a toll for that way, so.
And we've got several organizations that do that, that everything goes right back to the organization. And I think that if it is a nonprofit, and this is their fundraising, and everything is going back, I think that that's the least that the city can do to help them out.
Well, I would like to say, in this case, rather than say in the precedent.
In this case.
Good, but what I, all of it, I'm trying to say is, is, Ms. Hanson, that I would disagree that any nonprofit that goes forward.
No, I said nonprofit, that everything goes back to theirs.
Ms. Johns?
Well, I think our homeless shelter functions without any federal grant money, and that's really admirable, and I'm all right with waiving all fees, so personally, considering what they do and the budget that they run on, and considering that it does all go back. So in this case, I am.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you. So do we have a motion?
I move to approve park facility and right-of-way use permit for the Bisbee Coalition for the Homeless for the Fifth Annual Bisbee Mariachi Festival two thousand nineteen, for signs, trash barrels, dumpsters, additional dumpster pickup, parking spaces on Friday, November first, two thousand nineteen, from five to seven, and Saturday, November second, two thousand nineteen, from eleven to seven, with a waiver of fees.
My second.
Thank you. All those in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carried. And that reading specifically indicates further doubts, no bus, no buses in there. Item number four: Discussion on possible approval of a contract for purchase between the City of Bisbee and Melcher Brothers, Inc., for mine car wheels and axle sets in the amount of sixty-five thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. Mr. Graham, welcome back, sir.
Yes, you're the mayor of council. Yes, I'd ask for the approval of the purchase for mine car wheels and axle sets. Yes, I'd ask for the approval of the purchase of mine car wheels and axle sets, they're sixty-five thousand, six hundred and ten dollars.
All right, any questions for Mr. Graham?
How many wheel, axle, or car, of the mine car wheels and axle sets are there?
It'd be eighteen sets, so thirty-six wheels.
Eighteen sets, yeah.
I was gonna say sixty-five thousand dollars is worth.
And I understand that, that Melcher is the only, Brothers is the only one that can, can do this?
I actually reached out to Klein Steel, and I called some Canadian companies, but they were not able to provide, Klein's never got back to me. The Canadians can only provide, supply these wheels that were in poor condition.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the contract for purchase mine car wheels and axle sets from Melcher Brothers in the amount of sixty-five thousand, six hundred and ten dollars.
My second.
Thank you, yeah.
Did I ask this question here, it says sixty-four thousand here on this paper?
Yes, she, I'll, I'll, as I said, it's sixty-five thousand, it's a-
It's a take of.
Ms. Graham?
All right.
Sorry.
And it is correct on the council action form, you know, so we're all good. Although, Ms., Ms. Corinna, one question.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes unanimously, thank you, Mr. Graham. We'll see you next time you wanna buy something. It'll last a long time. All right, item number five, Mr. Harrell, it's gonna be a few minutes before you're up there. Oh, sure. I, I appreciate your eagerness, but I don't want, I don't want you to fall asleep on your feet there. Item number five, discussion of possible approval of OK Street be changed from a two-way road to a one-way road with travel, with traffic traveling from Nakco Road north to Youngblood Hill. And it will be, Mr. Harrell, but before that, it's gonna be Peter Young. You have three minutes, sir.
All righty, evening, mayor, council, clerk, and manager. I've spent a number of days recently canvassing the residents of OK Street with a petition here. The petition says that we residents don't want to have it turn into a one-way street. Be just like it's always been. I got names here from thirty-four residents, either of OK Street or of Youngblood Hill. I didn't talk to anybody else in town, this is a local issue. So that's a bunch of residents, and it's several businesses, the both hotels, the Eldorado Suites and the Bisbee Inn are adamantly against this, and have a lot of reasons. I'm not gonna try to say why it's a bad idea, but all these people think it's a bad idea. Something I would like to mention is some other problems that we have on OK Street with traffic. Somebody barreled down OK Street about a month ago in a big old dump truck and tore out the signs at the junction of the little ramp going down right in front of the Pithian Castle. And those signs have laid in the street now for a month. And they indicated a speed limit fifteen miles an hour, they indicated no truck traffic, either up OK Street or down the ramp. And also, there was a four-ton limp on those signs. As it is now, there's a, still the sign left that involved going down the hill, that says five miles an hour. A lot of us on OK Street feel that that's a reasonable speed, that fifteen miles an hour is too fast for OK Street. And we certainly think the trucks should not go up OK Street or down the ramp, but they have been, and a porta potty truck the other day tore, again, tore into the brewery down there, because it's not posted. And it didn't hurt the brewery, but it really tore the paint off the truck delivering porta potties for the Rotary. But signage on OK Street is an interesting issue, because what happens is people turn around at the top of OK Street. And several residents up there have had their cars hit by people getting up there and then getting scared of the hill and trying to turn around, there's not really much room there. So we're thinking about the need for a sign that says residential neighborhood, egress impossible or difficult, we don't know how to phrase it. But first of all, those bigger vehicles, hopefully, if it's signed right, won't be trying this.
Thank you, sir.
Am I up on my time?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But thank you very much.
I want to turn this over to the city clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That'll become public, right?
Yes.
It will, sir. And we will ask staff to, just to follow up on potential signage, depending on how, well, tonight, no matter how the vote goes, there still needs to be some signage addressed, so that will be done, thank you. Monica Patience. Welcome, Miss Patience.
Thank you. Okay, I live on two oh six OK Street, it's on Upper OK Street. So I'm thinking about this, and because I live there, I feel I have to have an opinion about this. And what I think is that actually a one-way is okay, is good, but I think that we that live there should be able to go two ways. So we could have like a permit for, for the people living on OK Street. And then it should, it should be maybe, be a one-way street, but so we could, we could go back and forth, because you need to go back. Sometimes you need a, can't go down, down by here because it's icy and such, so you, you would be afraid of going down there, but otherwise, I think a one-way street is okay, because otherwise you come up and you meet somebody, and then you are coming up OK Street, and then you have to back down, and it's very, could be very scary. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Sam Presley.
Sam Presley, I live at seventy-seven OK Street, I've been there eighteen years now. I think the idea of making OK Street one-way is terrible, and I would, you know, be in favor of that under almost any condition. There are lots of things that the city really should look at to do on OK Street, but mostly has to do, Youngblood Hill has to be better maintained. Very often, there was roof cycling on Youngblood Hill, and so very common thing, motorcycle riders go up OK Street, and then frequently, they are literally afraid to go down Youngblood Hill. And lots and lots of people drive on OK Street who absolutely do not know how to back up. And so if something, one of the things I thought could be done, it's actually possible for two cars to pass in front of my house, there are several locations along OK Street where it actually can happen. If there was a way to mark those, one way might be an actual center line, but in a way to show people, because people from out of town are afraid of that street. And so they stop in the middle of it and block traffic, because they're just forgetful of the fact that it's this weird street. But if you look in front of the entrance to the Eldorado Suites parking, if you look in the front of the entrance to my place and further up the hill, there are several places where it is possible to pass, but people don't believe it. So very commonly, I get called for my porch down to help people out, because they literally, and of course, the underlying problem is lots of people can't drive, but, but I get called down-
I wish we could solve that.
Yeah, well, you know, but anyway, I think there are things that can be done, but I think it has to be studied more carefully. But I would not be in favor of turning the street into one-way street.
Thank you, sir. Randy?
Willoughby.
Willoughby, yes, thank you. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. I live at the top of OK Street, two oh seven OK Street, and although I feel sympathetic to the residents and the businesses down on the lower end, I do actually favor OK Street becoming a one-way. Because I think in terms of allowing emergency vehicles to safely and expeditiously go up OK Street in case they have to, the, the way that it's currently set up, it's extremely challenging, if not impossible sometimes. And I think anybody who uses that street knows that it's, it's challenging to navigate sometimes. I think it's pretty dangerous, as a street marked fifteen miles an hour with two-way traffic and several blind curves. At the very minimum, there should be some sort of review of speed limit there to make sure that we're being as safe as we can there. Although I have mixed feelings about tourists coming up and checking out the road and stuff, I, I know that's part of the draw of Bisbee, and I wouldn't really wanna, you know, put that off on this to everybody, but I do think that it'd be a lot safer to keep traffic moving in one direction, especially since we have several blind curves and stuff like that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Trudy Lynn, whoops, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, you're the maybe down the road, okay. I think we gotta watch.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Like I said, I don't need to introduce this anymore, we all know that we're looking at the geometric design of OK Street, the existing geometric design. I was asked by Police Chief Chave and subsequently by council member, Hoppin, to review this. I gave you all a full report, I'll just briefly go over what I found. OK Street is a narrow road, it's the section from Nakco Road to Youngblood Hill Avenue, it's approximately a third of a mile. The width of that, that length ranges from about eight feet and then eight feet, two inches to thirty feet wide, and that's at the top of the hill, the OK Street at Youngblood Hill Avenue. And again, currently, it is a two-way road. The American Association of State Highway Traffic Officials, ASHTO, for short, sets the guidelines for geometric design on roads. And they recommend that residential roads or low tra-, low speed roads are, are between ten and eleven feet wide. With the exception where there are extreme right-of-way challenges, and it's acceptable to be at nine feet wide. The minimum with the parking lane is seven feet wide. So that gets us to, in my report, I suggest that, I, I put the sixteen-foot wide, nine feet for traveling, seven feet for any kind of parking. The International Fire Code states that fire lanes should be a twenty-foot wide of fire lane, unobstructed, but that is for a two-lane road, so that does, that does meet or follow what the ASHTO guidelines state. There are three locations that the road is under eight, nine feet wide. Now again, there's a diagram in the report. There are two locations where the road is wide enough to allow for two-way traffic. One of those locations, if there were two-way traffic, would eliminate the possibility for parking, and that is one place that there's parking. So again, if you, in my report, I recommend that we change the OK Street to a one-way street with temporary two-way traffic allowed for snow and ice events. That can easily be accomplished by having signs that are changeable, there are a number of ways that we can do that, that's not a problem. With that, are there any other questions?
So you're talking about the, we, we're gonna install flip signs that basically-
There, there, there can be flip signs, there, there, there are other signs that fit over the top of signs, and I was thinking more, more of that route, but that doesn't have to be, I was thinking that route just so that we didn't have people going to change signs. When we knew that a storm event was coming, that order was possible, if we were getting snow rise, we would go and change that.
And that's all I would see, where I was going was that we would have to have somebody probably in your department-
Yes, absolutely.
Actually physically going up and changing signs back and forth.
Yes, and those signs, they either flip or they fit right over the top, it's not something that takes very long.
And, and what was the fire department's, for the, for people here, what was the fire department's take on that?
I did submit the report to the, Mrs. Coleman and the fire chief and the police chief, they were asking.
Yeah, I, I, I would, because, simply because a lot of people here, I'm sure, and watching have read the packet, and I'd like them to, to know what our public safety people care. Fire chief?
Yeah, through the fire department, and we met on this, we also agreed, I think through safety reasons, it'd be a one-way street, it was easy access for emergency vehicles. Several times, we responded up there for EMS calls, not a fire call, we'd been blocked in by vehicles coming down, and then they've got to start backing up or finding a place to blow over, and that delays response, kind of for us to get to a patient or an emergency. So fire department would support it in that way.
Thank you, sir. And our police chief, Hubert Jemlee.
Evening, mayor, council, city staff, members of the public. As Mr. Harrell indicated, I, I approached him with this idea for the exact reasons that were mentioned. We've had increased amount of call volume up there for situations like this, vehicles that have been hit by cars trying to turn around and come back down rather than take the street down the hill. It is a challenge to navigate for some people, some people are intimidated by that road, but it, it does become a public safety concern. We've had fire responses a few times of Youngblood Hill in the past years, and the worst thing to have is a, a driver who has a hard time backing up, need a fire truck or an ambulance, and, and delay the response for those critical resources. So I asked Mr. Harrell to look into this, and he put together a great report, and I might even see myself do support it as well.
Thank you, sir. Did I understand correctly that by making this two-way, we're gonna lose the parking?
If, no, so there are a couple of places that there are, there, there is wide enough to make it two-way. Be, but there, if, if we did allow it, we would lose parking. The sixteen-foot wide will, will, if we stick with that as a minimum, will still maintain those few places that it is wide enough for parking.
Okay, any questions of Mr. Harrell? Ms. Clay?
So are you going to apply the ASHTO guidelines on every street in all of Bisbee?
If that's what we're doing, it's yes.
You know, you'll have quite the mess on your hands.
That's why you brought it to council. Ms. Hanson?
I have, I've been up OK, I am one of those that was very intimidated by it, because I do not like, you know, me to back, back up. However, Blood Street, or Youngblood, is not a good street either.
It is, it is very, it is pretty steep.
That's, that's my only concern, is that we're just kind of, you know, flipping one for another.
We can, you know, we can do our best to, to sign and give some warning to people that, you know, there's no turnaround, and at the, at the top, there's gonna be a, a steep de- you know, there's no turnaround, and at the, at the top, there's gonna be a steep decline. We can do our best to warn people, give a bad notice.
The, the other thing is, I know that there is a problem parking up there, and I think that the one, one-way street would help immensely with that, because there's been several times where people have been talking, you know, talking about not only having their car hit, but people not being able to get through because of the way the parking was, or not being able to park because now, because it's been designated as a no parking, so I think going one-way might open it up a little bit more.
I, it was, was the intent of, in my report saying that if we made, if we went to a one-way road doing our best to maintaining the existing parking.
I'm sorry, sir, you're not signed up. Any other questions? It's your word.
Well, I don't necessarily have a question, I'm just, I'm concerned that we're doing something to a community instead of working with them, and it, especially when we have a petition signed by thirty-four residents of the street saying that they don't want this, and I really do believe that safety needs to be paramount, and it does concern me that we have emergency vehicles getting stuck up there. I think that's very important, and I, I learned to drive here, and OK Street intimidates me, and I treat it like a one-way street, and, but the people, but I've gotten several phone calls this week, and none of them are in support of this, so I'm very torn, is how I'm gonna phrase this, because, you know, I looked at this report, and my instincts say this is a good thing, but then I listen to the people who actually live up there, and I had one woman call and give me an example and say, well, you know, I had a chair delivered to my house this week, and the furniture truck couldn't get down Youngblood Hill, so they had to back down, and so I feel like we're still gonna run into situations where it's gonna get treated like a two-way street, no matter what we try to do. So how can we, I guess I do have a question, how are we gonna account for that? Because I feel like even though we can make arrangements for inclement weather, what about situations like that? What if we get a novice driver who doesn't wanna go down Youngblood Hill, or we get a car with bad brakes that doesn't wanna go down Youngblood Hill, or we get any number of situations where they don't wanna go down Youngblood Hill, and they end up coming back down the other way for whatever reason illegally, how are we gonna handle that?
That's really kind of a rhetorical question, though, right?
But it's gonna become a practical question.
No, 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 that's, I'm not suggesting it's not, but what I'm saying, I'm not suggesting, I didn't think you were suggesting Mr. Harrow had an answer.
Well, but I mean, we're, we're gonna have to answer it in the real world here if we do this.
I would say that that would be an enforcement question.
Right, it is, it is an enforcement question, yeah.
Really, what I, what I tried to focus on were the facts, this is what the law is, this is what our guidelines state, and, and, yeah, that's, that's what I tried to focus on.
And, thank you, you did a great job.
You wanna answer that?
I was gonna say, would you mind repeating the question, please?
So, so we have in the report, we do have, you know, parameters for how we're gonna deal with inclement weather, we're gonna put up signs that we can change out, and we're gonna allow it to temporarily be a two-way street, but I just see other situations arising where people are gonna treat it like a two-way street. One constituent who called me over the weekend told me about, she said she got a chair delivered to her house, and she said that the furniture truck could not get down Youngblood Hill, so it had to back down the street. And I got to thinking about it, and I thought, well, what if we get some, like, okay, when I was in driver's ed, Mr. Crossco totally took me down Youngblood Hill. What if I got to Youngblood Hill and didn't wanna go down, and we had to turn around and come back? I just feel like there are other situations where that is gonna get treated like a two-way street, even if we make it into a one-way street, and how are we gonna handle that from a law enforcement perspective?
So I would say from a law enforcement perspective, it'd be handled just like any other situation, any other violation, the officer responded to that, or who observes that violation has the discretion to deal with that as the officer deems necessary to rectify the situation, whether it be issue of citation, or issue of verbal warning, or issue of forbidden warning. The officer has that discretion to do those things, so those would be addressed in that situation the exact same way they'd be addressed if somebody was speeding down the road, they would be dealt with. And again, I, I mentioned this to Jesus because of some of the issues that we've dealt with, I do agree with some of the suggestions with the signage and letting people know that if you don't live up there, you probably really shouldn't be driving up there, because that, that is part of the problem, is having some people that, kind of cruising through there, if you will, increasing the traffic flow, that, that poses a problem, people, tourists coming in, they don't, they don't know what's, what lies ahead, and so if we could prevent some of that from going up there, that would help the situation. But it is, it is a challenge, and, and it is a challenge driving up there, answering a call for service. And it's easy for us, our cars are much smaller, the fire departments, ambulances, rescue truck, fire truck, that, that poses a problem. There's, there are other streets like this within Bisbee that we've had to deal with recently, Maxfield's an old, we can't make that a one-way street because we wouldn't be able to get out, but we have people traveling to these areas who are unfamiliar, and then we end up with a car on the side of the mountain, and it takes three days for us to get it out. Those are, those are challenges that we're dealing with, and we're just trying to find ways to lessen those challenges, and so this was one idea that was brought before.
Thank you, sir. I, I will indicate that I am always a big proponent of, that we ask staff to do something, and when they provide us the answers, the correct answers, to follow those answers, because that's what we have them for. In this particular case, I have to admit that when we're presented with a petition of close to everybody that is affected by this, that says, please don't do this, then that is something that, that's where we have to put on our, I have to put on my politician hat and say that if that's what the people want or don't want, then that's the way I'm going to have to do, and I know that staff understands that, maybe not appreciates it, but they understand that, and so, you know, that's, that's my, my statement on it, along with that if this doesn't pass, I would like to see us make a concerted effort on signage, and seeing what we can do up there to try to make the situation better through the signage. So, Mr. Evans?
Okay. On the face of it, driving on OK Streets is quite a challenge, there's no, there's no doubt about it. The idea that, that it's a two-way street is, you know, kind of mind-blowing the first time you drive down it. And I, you know, I originally thought that it would probably be a good idea to make it into a one-way street, but then when I started talking to residents of OK Street, they gave me a lot of good reasons why it shouldn't be, particularly people that lived on both ends. The people that live on the Youngblood Hill end, they're, they're adamantly opposed to this for a thorough number of reasons. A lot of them, to get to their houses, they come up the gulch and go up Youngblood to get to their houses, and this would, you know, that, this would eliminate that, and people also on the other end down where the hotels are, they're adamantly opposed to this also. People in the middle, it really doesn't affect them as much, but it, it still has an effect on it. You know, I, I, I know that it's, it's a difficult problem, and I really, you know, I very often want to listen to the police and fire department because they're experts in this, and also Jesus put a lot of work into this, going out measuring and putting this, this whole package together. But the, the people have pretty much spoken, we have a great turnout here tonight, a number of people that came and signed up to speak on this issue, and the petition that Peter Young took up, and, and like David said, that's, that's almost everybody up there that wants to, that wants to continue it the way it is. So my inclination at first was, yeah, this might not be a bad idea, but the people that live there, they wanted it kept the way it is, and I know that we've lived with this situation for all these years, and, and I think that we're gonna have to continue to live with this situation as far as I'm concerned. Of course, additional signage is a great idea, and maybe there's some places up there where parking might have to be restricted, just to allow people, you know, to laze around the curves, but yeah, a good look at signage, and also, you know, we could use additional signage on Brewery Avenue itself. We have people running up and down Brewery Avenue like it's a racetrack, and maybe, you know, some additional signage there might help. So I, I'm, my inclination is to listen to the people that live there, and they seem to be pretty adamantly against it, so I'd like to see this die.
Ms. Klein?
Yeah, I, our streets in Old Bisbee are a challenge, I mean, there's no getting around that, but we've lived with this street like this for well over a hundred years, and I think we'll survive. And as far as emergency vehicles and response time, I mean, most of you know that I always support that, but that's why we have specially-built fire trucks for the streets in Old Bisbee. We also know that they're trained on how to maneuver them, and they know what to do. This isn't the only street that, you know, ambulances and fire trucks have had to back down or whatever. Parking is an issue, it has been forever, but, you know, way back when, you know, not everybody had a car, and those that did had one, not two or three like we do now, so I think that might be causing, you know, some of the, the parking issues up there, but I don't know, I am opposed to, opposed to it.
Yeah, when OK Street went in, it was, it was how many horses of mule gene, I think our gene had. So...
Mayor?
Yes?
I would have to...
Yes, please.
I've gone back two or three times, you know, switching back and forth. The biggest thing was the, the issue of safety and getting the fire department out there. But I have to agree, when you have that many people that have signed up that don't want it, that maybe what would need to be done is to sit down with the people that live on OK Street and, and talk to them, to see what, what, what they see as the biggest problems, and whether or not anything can be resolved a little bit. But the way it is right now, I wouldn't be able to work for this either.
Evan?
Yes?
I would be more than willing anytime to sit down with the residents of OK Street and discuss this, but I believe they have spoken already. I, I believe the petition and the attendance at tonight's meeting pretty much is an indication of how they feel, so...
Would somebody like to make a motion? Discussion of possible approval to enter into a service agreement with Jacobs slash Operations Management, Inc. to procure and manage SCADA system upgrades at the San Jose Water Treatment, wastewater treatment plant. Mr. Harrow?
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The SCADA system is an acronym for Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition. Our system there is beginning to fail. The SCADA is not allowing for the programmable logic controller and the human-machine interface systems to read it correctly. Those systems are necessary so that the, the plant can have automatic changes. In addition, the SCADA is not allowing the dissolved oxygen monitor to read correctly, that can result in using too much power and not in taxing the blowers. It also can affect the UV system, being unable to determine the power needed for disinfection. Jacobs is obviously our operating company, and they, they feel very confident that they know what they're, what they're doing, they're going to be utilizing the actual manufacturer version of SCADA system to, to make sure that it gets repaired. We also have members of Jacobs here if you have any specific questions about how it operates.
Yeah, didn't we replace this, the SCADA, the computer for SCADA? The computer for SCADA, okay, all right, all right, okay, got it. Okay, we had, Ms. Coleman, have you discussed with the city attorney the questions that...
I believe I need to answer any questions.
Jim, are you, are you, are you there, sir?
Yes.
We, we received inquiry about bidding on this particular item, whether it was required?
Yeah, this is, it's in order to facilitate an existing contract, so the city could choose to go for additional bidding, but it would be within procurement law to also proceed as recommended by Mr. Harrow tonight, because it's facilitating the existing contract that's already in place, so the council could choose to go either direction, and, but either approach would be sustainable and reasonable.
Okay. So it's, the, the bottom line is, in lay terms, it's illegal to do, to do it this way?
It is, it would be legal to do it this way, as, as I understand this agreement or this purchase is to facilitate the existing contract that's in place to continue to make it operationally effective.
Yes, that's correct. Okay. Did that answer anybody's questions?
I didn't have that question.
Oh, okay, well, do we have any discussion or motions?
Mayor, I have a question.
Mr. Mayor, I signed up for this agenda.
Where are you?
I signed up.
Oh, there you are, you're on number seven. I apologize. Yes, sir, you were waving at me, I thought we were...
Oh, just communicating some more, okay.
Yeah, yeah, come on up now.
All right. Al Anderson, I'm with you, West Boulevard. I am pro-competitive bidding. I think the city ought to be competitive bids on just about everything we can. And I hear your attorney saying that there's some type of agreement with the plant operator that maybe we can not have to go with the competitive bidding, but it never hurts the city, and the city has a long history of not competing stuff enough, in my opinion. Now, I know that there's, I'm a little confused about this, so this is, this is a procurement? It's my understanding that, that it would be to supply and install and warranty a new SCADA system and train the plant operators on how to use it, but the maintenance of the plant, this doesn't affect the maintenance of the plant, other than it helps the plant run smoother, and it certainly helps the operators monitor the plant. But there are a lot of sources in southeast Arizona and close to Bisbee that can supply this equipment, this instrumentation, and give us competitive prices. Now, if there's an urgency to it, that's fine, I would say put it out to bid, and, you know, close the bids in two weeks, I think that's reasonable, but our price can only go down, I can guarantee you. That's all I have to say?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, my apologies for missing you, I...
That's all right.
I frankly signed your name, but assumed it was for a different item, so I am sorry. Mr. Harrow, what is our, is this an emergency?
Well, it's definitely not functioning correctly. With our last rainstorm that we had, we had a... With our last rainstorm that we had, we had a large amount of influence into the wastewater treatment plant, so much so that it overflowed the lift station there at the wastewater treatment plant. The SCADA system wasn't able to detect that, wasn't able to make adjustments, and it wasn't able to contact Jacobs to let them know that something was going on.
Well, that sort of sounds like a, a, something that needs to be sooner than a later than here. Counsel? I totally agree with Mr. Anderson that we need to absolutely be diligent on, on bids and getting the lowest absolute prices available to us. However, if this is a situation that is costing us money or could even worse cost us an ADEQ ding, then I'm for listening to the advice of counsel indicating that it is okay in this case. Quite bluntly, the ADEQ potential ding would sway my foot. Yes?
The SCADA, I know that we've been having problems with that particular piece of equipment long before, well, before Jacobs started managing the wastewater. Was the problems with the SCADA, the reason that we had the deficiencies would be, I can't, ADEQ, ADEQ, yeah.
No, I don't believe that you want to...
Want to look?
Yes, sir, please. Thank you, sir, thank you for being here.
Hi, yeah, I'm Jake, I'm a project manager, I've been doing this for four years. The system as it was, the SCADA system will monitor, but you have to have operators that understand what it's telling them. And the system that you had, the problems you had were due to insufficient monitoring of it to allow the web testing to go bad, which caused ADEQ to come in. Right now, the system is not calling us out, and the bidder that's bid on is the one that manufactured it, Aqua Aerobics. That's the bid. They manufactured it, so they're going to get, I've done this bids from somewhere, I believe in bids, believe me. But I've done this, I did Safford, I ran a place in Las Vegas, around 150 million gallon plant. And if you get, you're going to get bids on them, but if someone's already got a foot in the door, and they've built the equipment, it's already, they put it in there 10 years ago, they're going to give you the best upgrade price. If somebody else comes in, they're going to give you a retrofit, which is going, is going to cost more. In my experience, the SCADA problems we had in Safford were about a hundred thousand dollars worth. The bids came in at three hundred thousand dollars. Extra bids. These are from companies, company to company, so I like them all, don't get me wrong, I have nothing personal in this. But if they're coming in fresh, they're going to make, they're going to have to replace everything you have. And they don't have the inside drawings that these people have. The work that you had done earlier was put the PC there and the computer program, that's called HMI, the Human Machine Interface, where that calls us out. The literal hardware is behind that Moeb过于 cabinet, that's 10 years old, obsolete, it can't talk to you. This upgrade will provide a historian that will give you recordable data from here, from now to eternity. And it also gives you time since critical data, like when we're not there at the plant, 16 hours during the night. It's recording everything, it can make adjustments automatically based on that data that it records. And all that data is in storage for, for you guys, it is there always. You'll be able to look at this data, and it's a check against how our operations also. There's nothing there now, absolutely nothing there. When we come in the morning, it's a clean slate. So this is, brings you up to the 21st century. And also, potentially, it'll bring in your lift stations you're having problems with. All this can be brought in to the system, so it can all be one, one system that can call out, it can greatly simplify your entire water wastewater operations.
Excellent. Thank you. Any, any other questions, Miss Jones? Thank you, sir, really appreciate your attendance. Anything, any questions? Do we have a question?
I don't have a question, just a comment. To me, this is listed as an out of scope issue. To me, it shouldn't be an out of scope issue, it should be just part of the day-to-day operations that should be covered under a contract.
The purchase of hardware?
We're cooperating with them, I don't see it as...
Well, that's not where the contract stands, Ms. Klein.
There's a lot of things about that contract, brother.
Any other comments? Any motion?
I move to enter into a service agreement with Jacobs Operations Management, Inc., to procure a managed SCADA system upgrades at San Jose Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Cornetto?
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein?
Nay.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes for one. Item number seven. Discussion of possible approval to enter into a service agreement with the WLB Group to design repairs to a retaining wall located above 75C OK Street. Back to OK Street, Mr. Harrow.
Yes, sir, good evening, Mayor, you were there last time. This, this property has a wall above it, this wall pulls up a, a walkway that serves multiple residents further up, different owners. The wall, it failed, it has, had its sinkhole, it failed, and this is the, the property that Mrs. Coleman brought up, I believe it was last, last meeting. So we do have a, a cooperative, we have a on-call contract with the WLB Group, which is already designing other walls, repairs. So I had them come out there and give us proposal. We don't know what the, what the final design concept will be yet. Once they get that to us, then we can decide how we want to proceed.
Questions?
Is this our retaining wall?
Yes. This one is a, this is a wall that pulls up a, a public walkway that serves multiple residents, not just one residence, it's, there's two properties directly above the 75C property, and there are additional properties even further upstairs that use, that utilize this public walkway.
Okay, so no part of this retaining wall is privately owned, any sections of it?
To my understanding, no.
Anything else? Do we have a question?
I move to enter into a service agreement with the WLB Group to design repairs to a retaining wall located above 75C OK Street. My second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Cornetto?
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Harrow. Item number eight, discussion of possible approval of an RFP slash RFQ for architectural and engineering services for rent A and E, closed rent, for the design of the new city hall building. Ms. Coleman, city manager.
Yes, so I think I said them all. And in the meantime, I did have an opportunity to reach out to Al Anderson and spend some time with him on Friday afternoon, talking about how to proceed with an RFP RFQ. I have to give him credit for a lot of the documentation that he seen in front of you, it was very helpful in the process. Aside from a few adjustments to numbers of employees, dates for receiving responses, this is pretty much a document that a professional has provided for us.
Wonderful. Thank you, and I'd like to publicly thank Mr. Anderson for all of his pro bono hard work on our behalf in reference to this, so thank you, sir. Any questions? Hearing none, do we have a motion? I move to approve the RFP RFQ for architectural and engineering services for the design of the new city hall building to include allowing city staff to provide pertinent information on the RFP RFQ and attachments as required.
My second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Cornetto?
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes unanimously, and good, thank you. Thank you, staffs. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. That's two years, so let's get this thing going.
We will have that published in the paper on Thursday, which will meet our 30-day publication requirement. And then we can also send that out to other outlets that architects and engineers are checking on our own basis.
Wonderful. Thank you. Discussion of possible, item number nine, discussion of possible approval of a memorandum of understanding MOU between the Cochise County 911 Administrator and the Bisbee Police Department to establish the administration of the emergency telecommunications system revolving grant. Ms. Coleman, that I see the police chief, so I'm going to guess that Chief Chavi is going to handle this.
He is, he got it, I gave it.
Sir?
So this is a, the, the paperwork that you have in your packet, most of that is just supporting documentation, naming Susan Popitrafon from CCOM as the 911 Administrator. The MOU that brought forward asking for, to enter into is the last three or two pages of your packet. And it's just a, it's pretty standard for, we, I guess we've done this a few times over the past couple of years, just an agreement that we have entering in, she is our PSAP coordinator, she's been delegated by the state as such, and she is the one that handles all of our stuff. We have quarterly meetings with all the other PSAPS around the county, and she is the administrator of that, handles training. She was a very, very, played a very key role in our 911 upgrade that we did a few months ago, and spent a lot of time here with us, and this is just another piece of that.
Thank you. Any questions of the chief? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding MOU between Cochise County 911 Administrator and the Bisbee Police Department to establish the administration of the emergency toward communications system revolving grant fund.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Cornetto?
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item number 10. Discussion of possible direction to staff regarding low-income and affordable housing development initiatives, to include, but not limited to, partial number 102-15-114-C, Zoned C2 comprised of 8.65 acres. Ms. Coleman?
So I was not there, but I do understand that there was a housing coalition meeting that took place the, over a week ago.
That's right.
Okay. And that during that conversation, there was interest in some very developable acres that kind of able onto the city. So this would be that specific parcel, expanded though, to accept direction from the council on how to proceed to work with the other agencies that were involved in the conversation, and also to allow us to expand upon conversation about other areas that might potentially provide some low-income or affordable housing for persons.
Yes, thank you. This is something that we became involved with some, two weeks ago, involving affordable housing and low-income housing in the Tucson area, the Tucson, Bisbee area, Tucson because Tucson Habitat is involved. And we're working with the county health department, Judith Gilligan, in identifying needs as well as Cochise County, affordable housing.
County Development.
County Development, that's, they changed the name, that's why, as it did. So anyway, the county, the county's involved, we're involved, Habitat is involved, as well as another development group.
CGO is involved.
CGO is involved, thank you, thank you, Ms. Johns. So there's many, many people involved, organizations involved in this. And one, one potential was the 8.65 acres behind Safeway, which is owned by the city, because of its proximity to Safeway, which answers, as they say, ticks the boxes for the state requirements on tax breaks on, on development, providing tax breaks on, on development.
Low-income housing.
And the low-income housing, absolutely, thank you. So that's why I asked for this to be brought forward, because I didn't quite honestly want to continue our discussions with this group if the city council was saying, we're not, we are not even interested in providing that eight acres or 8.65 acres for housing. So that's why it was probably being brought forward. This isn't a commitment, we're not, we're not voting, we're providing direction to staff. But I, I'd like to have a brief conversation so that we understand how the city council that's present feels about this, about us actually being the people that provide land for multiple affordable housing. Now, let me, let me, if, if Habitat is the one involved in this, they're one of several potential players. If they're the ones involved in this, their business model is not to come in and put all, one type of housing in, because that, quite honestly, if it's all low-income housing, they believe that that creates a ghetto. And what they instead do is put different types of housing, affordable, low-income, apartments, things like this, so that it's multi, multi-use within the area, which keeps the area viable. And so that's kind of where we're at. Ms. Johns, would you like to add anything? Anything?
No, I think, I think you hit all the important parts. Habitat does developments where 20% of the houses are affordable housing, and 80% of the houses are market rate, so they're sold to people who would be paying what you would be paying for any other house. And then Habitat builds exclusively single-family homes, and, but the county is also looking at what, because I'm working on this, I've been working on this project too in my day job, and we've been looking at also partnering with other developers who don't just build single-family homes, but who build apartment complexes to, geared not just toward people who are interested in homeownership, but geared toward people who can't handle homeownership, who can't even get to that level. So we're looking at maybe developing that acreage in, in a multitude of ways, if you guys agree to this, you know? So, so yeah, there are all kinds of possibilities, but we just want to bring it before council now and kind of get the stamp of approval to say that's what we want to use that land for, hopefully. So, but there are all kinds of possibilities, and it's really up to us. But we've got developers interested beyond Habitat as well. And, but yeah, we've got county development and health department and CGO and Gorman USA is a developer out of...
Excellent.
Yeah, yeah, and they're a national developer who built low-income housing, and I'm trying to remember who else. I think, I think we've covered everybody between the two of us.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Ms. Coleman?
Yeah, I did want to say that this does not identify the mechanism by which the property would be utilized, and I will continue to work with your attorney to identify the best way to move forward.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yes, yes, and this item is simply to provide direction to staff that, are we interested in pursuing this, or is the council saying, absolutely, this is nothing I, we care about? So, yes, Ms. Hanson, first?
I think that this is absolutely fantastic, because this has been long, long leading in Bisbee.
in Bisbee. And to have the different types of housing, I think is, is great. I think this is a really good start.
Thank you, Ms. Klein.
Well, you know, housing is very critical here, but I would really, if, if this is something we decide we would like to do, I'd really like to see us have a work session and bring everything out, and hopefully bring residents out who would benefit from this.
Absolutely. Yeah, this, this is, this would be precluding any of that, it's just direction to staff. We definitely, if this moves forward as council's direction, then we definitely would have a work session in order to discuss specifics and what we're willing to do with, and so forth, so absolutely. I just, after, I think probably more negative, if there's anything negative about this, I think we really want to hear about it, otherwise, then, you know, the, we would be directing staff to proceed as these meetings continue and the data comes into them to be able to take that. And obviously, there's things down the road with zoning changes and things like this. This is a C2, which is a, is a code word, so there's things like that. Mr. Higgins? Yeah, I think it's a great idea, and I, you know, I think the staff should move forward on this. And of course, you know, we'll have work sessions, as you say, as the data comes in. And, you know, I'd like to get this done, you know, while Jimmy Carter's still alive, maybe he can come help us out. Thank you. Ms. Coleman, I assume, and, and Mr. Harrow and Mr. Ledbetter, I assume that you understand from the comments what we would appreciate to, how we would appreciate you to proceed.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Here we are, that time of the evening, it's the city manager's report. Ms. Coleman?
Yeah, I did include your property tax oversight commission levy report. It basically confirms that what you had budgeted for 2019, let's meet the requirements for your property tax levies. I also had an opportunity to meet with the Ward One council members to discuss Erie Street and the cars that are parked on the street, and to work with the police chief to come up with a workable solution. We'll be reaching out to the property owners there once we iron out details, but things like length of time that a car could sit on the street, given our right-of-way permit to do so, cars being licensed, being operable, those kinds of things, and then working with Public Works to find out what days would it be preferable to not have any cars parked on the street to be able to do street maintenance or street sweeping, that kind of work. So, once I iron out the details, I'll let you know.
Great, thank you. Ms. Hanson, we're down to comments, comments from the council.
Thank you.
And we don't care that you're going on a three, a three-week cruise tomorrow.
Actually, it's 28 days.
Oh, that was counted.
I just wanted to update on the count, on the public on the committees that I'm the liaison for. First of all, I wanted to, on the cemetery committee, Grace Wiggins is very, very involved with the wreaths across America, so I wanted to give you an update on where we're at, the number of grave sites, and it's an estimate because they can't find all of them. But anyway, there's about 900 grave sites that are veterans in Evergreen and about 100 in Memorial Gardens. And right now, they have enough donations or people that have contributed for 587, which I think is really great, because that's much more than last year. So I'm just trying to encourage people and just to let people know that there's still time to make donations. For one wreath, it's $15. You can do it in honor of somebody, you can do it in memory of somebody, or you can just do it because you love veterans. The other thing is that if you are going to use these paper copies, which are the applications, and mail them in yourself, please have them mailed in by the November 25th, because the deadline for online ordering is one December. And hopefully, we will get up to, close to the number that we need. And I'm very happy with the response that we have gotten this year, and I think that the more that it's advertised, more people will hear about it and want to contribute. And thank you for all the people that have contributed to that. The next one is the Parks and Rec Committee, and at the last meeting, there was discussion on purchasing three standing bulletin boards for San Jose, and, two for San Jose and one for Warren. And the, and this was brought forward by Donna Pulling, and she had talked to the construction, high school construction, and they had agreed to take on the project. And so there will be two bulletin boards that will be built by them. One will be in Warren, and right now, they're, we're looking at that going into where the DeVista Park, where the farmer's market is. And the other one, we're looking at the library annex. It's not set in stone, but I'm just telling you that there would be two boards that can be used for events, people that want to advertise events, but keep in mind, it is not an official city public notice place. So if you see something that is not an official site, I don't even know what they are now since we've moved twice.
Both post offices have locations, we're gonna be getting another one here.
Okay. So, the last thing is...
This isn't an official, nevermind.
What is?
Sorry, sorry. I'm violating my rules.
I'm not saying it couldn't become one, but it's not an official, it won't be an official site until that goes to council, or Ashley approves. And the last is the youth council. We've been having some trouble trying to find individuals for the youth council. However, Ms. Coleman and Ms. Cornado have been working very diligently. As you saw, or maybe you didn't see, because there was one individual who was approved for the youth council. I had talked to another individual, Ms. Coleman has talked to a couple people that are interested, and also to one of the teachers who have about six or seven. So hopefully, by the first of December, we'll be able to have you do this. That's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Travel safe. Mr. Higgins?
Aye.
We have a motion, we have a second. Those in favor signify with cede. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. The ayes have it, you stand as your... Mr. Ledbetter, thank you, sir.
So what were you doing in the second?